I would like to call the Jefferson Elementary School District Governing Board Meeting to Order for June the fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen at seven oh four P. M. Can we have the roll call?
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Marie Bruswella.
Here. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Flag Day today. And my daughter's birthday. No, just kidding. Okay. So, since we have nobody here in the audience, Bob, can I ask you to lead us in the flag? You're the longest standing employee in the district.
We're sitting at that moment.
Or sitting.
Former President of the Senate, your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. You got it. Okay. Sorry if I surprised you. It was a big surprise. Okay. So, number four, let's review the board meeting guidelines.
And I apologize, Ms. McCulick is out ill this evening, and she is the custodian of the slide, so we don't have it up to display. But you have yours on your.
Right here.
Yeah.
Ready? Okay. Let's move on. Approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. And now we'll move to number six, a public hearing. Public hearing, and we'll open that public hearing at seven o'clock. It's for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, C.S.E.A., Chapter Two Thirty Three, Contract Proposal.
That would be seven oh five, I believe, Ms. Bruswella.
What did I say?
Seven.
Oh, excuse me. Seven oh five.
We started the meeting at seven oh four, so we have to start the hearing at seven oh five.
I can see tonight is a fun night.
Yes.
With only four people to laugh at us. Okay. So, we're gonna open the public hearing at seven oh five and a half. Does anybody want to, did you want to say anything? So, we have no cards to speak on this item, so we'll close the meeting at seven, I want to stall a little bit. Seven oh six. The next one, under B, is Public Hearing for Jefferson Elementary School District, Counter Proposal to C.S.E.A., Chapter Two Thirty Three. Having not received any cards to speak on this one, we'll close the public hearing. And we'll call it seven oh seven.
It's still seven oh six.
So, the next one is number C, Public Hearing for two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, Local Control Accountability Plan. Do, we do not have any cards to speak on this one. Does anybody want to say anything about this? No? Okay. We'll close that public hearing, and I guess we're gonna call that seven, what, eighteen?
Seven oh six.
We, no, we already had another seven oh six.
It's been seven oh six for a while.
Well, let's see, let's go to seven oh eight, please.
Seven oh eight.
Seven oh eight. I think we just need to have each one at one different, or we'll just pause. We'll just pause for a moment, okay?
Can you say seven oh seven?
Yeah, just pause. So, that one, let's, can we just have each one one minute difference?
Five, six, and seven.
Okay. So, that's it. Five, six, seven. Okay, D, Public Hearing on Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Seventeen, Eighteen of the Proposed Budget for the Jefferson Elementary School District. And we're here to hear, hear public comments on the Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Seventeen, Eighteen Proposed District Budget. Is there anyone here to speak? No. We'll close that public hearing. Next public hearing, the, the next number coming up here. Under E, Public Hearing on District Reserves. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry. Maria just wanted a clarification there.
Okay. Just one minute each time. Move it one minute.
We need to do it at the actual time, so.
Okay, then we'll sit away.
We can, or we can just say the time.
Okay.
So, it's seven oh seven.
So, that's. Seven oh five, seven, six, seven. We already went to eight on C, because I said eight then. So, let's pause for a moment, till it gets to nine. It's hard to see those little numbers in between, the big numbers. So, D, Public Hearing on Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Seventeen dash eighteen Proposed Budget, and that's being opened at two thou, uh, two, seven oh nine. Okay? My watch already says seven ten, but we'll look at that one. So, do we have anybody speaking on this item? We'll wait a minute. Okay, we'll close that public hearing. So, now we're definitely at E, and then we're opening that one at seven. We got seven nine. So, that would be the Public Hearing on District Reserves in Excess of Minimum Requirements. The Governing Board of the Jefferson Elementary School District will hear public comments on the district reserves in excess of minimum requirements. Not receiving any speaker cards, and nobody here to speak on it. We will now close it at seven ten. Looking at F, Public Hearing. We'll open that public hearing at, I'm gonna say it's seven, seven eleven.
Seven ten.
We just closed at seven ten, so we'll take a brief wait then. We're gonna be a little picky about it, we'll just wait.
Or we can open this one in the same minute in which we closed the last one.
Someone might come in, you never know. We'll open the next, uh, public hearing of F at seven, call it eleven then. Public Hearing on Adoption of Suicide Prevention Policy and Administrative Regulations. Governing Board of the Jefferson Elementary School District will hear public comments on the adoption of the Suicide Prevention Policy and Administrative Regulations. Having no written, um, speaker cards, and no one in the audience available to speak on this, we will close this public hearing. Now, wait one minute to give it time. Close this public hearing, as soon as that little hand goes up. So, we'll now move on to number seven, Communications, Board Member Acknowledgement and Accommodations. Would you like to go first?
Uh, sure. Um, I wanna commend a couple events I went to since the last meeting. Um, the first one was to the, um, Restorative Justice Event led by A.F.T. at T.R. Polisita. Um, there were several speakers, including our very own, um, Mr. Ali, talking about restorative justice and ways that we can implement some of that in our future community schools. So, I thought that was a great discussion, just hearing from other people from throughout the community and across the country on that. So, I wanna thank A.F.T. for leading that event. And then I also attended, I missed a couple, but I also attended a couple of graduations. Um, I went to the Ben Franklin and Fernando Rivera graduations, so wanna congratulate those graduates, as well as all, um, graduates from our school district.
I'll add my congratulations to all the eighth grade graduates, and particularly, of course, to Franklin Roosevelt School for their very first graduating class of eighth graders, and they had a very nice, um, graduation last Wednesday for that. Um, I think that's, it seems like we've been running around doing all sorts of stuff. You'd think there was more, but, um, I think it was, those four graduations last week that make me feel like that. So, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, it was a very, very busy week, at least a week and a half. Um, I also attended the, um, the program from A.F.T. on Restorative Just, Justice, and I thought it was extremely wonderful, and, um, I hope that that will continue to be out to many areas. We had a great group, um, and they had a lot, some good food, too. But anyway, um, I did attend the graduations, F.D.R., having their first, um, uh, eighth graders to graduate, and it was really nice, because you could really, uh, pay attention to them, there's only thirty of them, and it was really great. And each one spoke. They had the opportunity at the time to, for each child to speak. Then the graduations, Ben Franklin, Polisita was great as well, and Fernando Rivera. And each one slightly different, but each one very, very wonderful, and great students, great speakers. It was, uh, best time, I love graduations, so. Then the other thing that I did attend was, uh, the retirement dinner for, uh, Melinda Dart, who was retiring after teaching for so many years with us. And, uh, it was great, everybody was there, I thought. This place was packed. It was great. It, sorry to lose her, she's wonderful, but I think we'll see her around.
And at least we got her out with a great party.
Huh?
And at least we sent her off with a great party.
Yeah, oh my god, yeah. I mean, she was so happy, it was just, there was everybody possible, there was PTA, there was the board, there was administration, there was teachers, there was, uh, the union members that she works with, and you, you know, she really does a big job with that. And so, it was just so many folks there. Um, it, she was amazed that somebody came. But she's great, that's why everybody wanted to go. And the venue, I never been there, the venue was excellent, I think we should plan more parties over there.
For our district, we can't.
Yes, we can. Retirement, you can go anywhere.
Well, retirement, you can, yes.
Yeah, I didn't mean.
We can't.
That's what I meant, good parties. Yeah, no, we can go. Okay, so, um, anyways, I know I probably, I'm right, I think I probably forgot to say something, um, that we went to, I don't know, was there anything you guys can think of that we, but anyway, it seemed like a real fast, it was, we had, what, four days? Wasn't it four days? Oh, one, I guess three days of graduations. Okay. So, other than that, we can, we'll move on to Correspondence and the Superintendent's Comments.
Yes, um, the only announcement I have is that our, uh, district office is moving. We are in temporary housing located now at the rear end of our parking lot. Um, and, uh, today's the first day of the commotion, we expect a couple more, and we'll be back up and running by Monday.
That's it, that, only that much time, huh? That's fast.
Yes.
Wow. Oh, that's.
That's the, all the time, that's all the time that I gave.
We will.
We will be, we will be back in business by Monday.
Okay. Okay. So, and Ministers' Comments, it's all yours.
Yeah, just really quickly, I wanna say congratulations to everybody, great year. I'm so glad, uh, to have been at the party as well, it's nice to see off Melinda and see so many people there, and just, uh, thanks to everybody at those graduations. Graduations are very difficult events to put together, and all the folks that, uh, came together to make it happen, the families of students, and just to all my, my colleagues, have a great summer.
Okay. So, now we have persons wishing to address the board. Anybody? No? I have no.
Without Melinda reading.
I have no speaker cards. Well, they will be coming later.
I'm sure.
I think they just need a well-deserved time off.
Yes.
Besides, our agenda didn't look too powerful, I mean, you know, too questionable. Okay. Anyway, here we go. So, now we're, we're done with all that. General Functions, we, we, um, the Consent Agenda.
Make a motion.
We will need that to be a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Okay. Can we call the rolls?
Mr. Koo.
Um, aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye.
Mrs. Bruswella.
Aye. All right. So, now we can bypass all these starred items here, go down to F, C.S., uh, C.S.C., C.S.E.A. Chapter Two Thirty Three, and Jefferson Elementary School District Memorandum of Understanding for Two Thousand and Seventeen, Eighteen School Year. And I turn it over to.
Yeah. So, it was initially placed off consent because we didn't have the M.O.U., but we've received it, and it's attached to the agenda packet, so we currently have the M.O.U. now, so. So, I didn't feel comfortable putting on, on consent without all of the information.
Okay, thank you. So, let me take a vote on this then.
I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Jefferson Elementary School District and the C.S.E.A., Chapter Two Thirty Three.
I'll second that.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passed. Next one is stars. Now, we'll go down to item number nine, Curriculum and Instruction, Public, um, wait, I was looking at you and I got, come on here. Okay, so, English Language Arts and Math Program. Here we are. Oh, do they know how to work that? Oh, see? I thought it wasn't gonna be on there.
You see, this is a test.
Yeah.
It's, it's there, it just went to sleep.
It went to sleep, okay.
Well, I'm jealous.
Here. All right, Ms. Pace and Ms. Borda. Okay, here we go.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jessica Pace, and I'm the Program Director for English Language Arts, and with me tonight is our Math Program Director, Debbie Borda. Um, we plan to highlight for you some of the professional, um, learning experiences that we've had this year for our teachers. Um, we will share, um, successes that we've had in the areas of coaching, curriculum development, benchmark assessments, and then our plans for next year. So, we'll begin with talking about coaching.
So, I'm just giving you updates on this year's coaching that, um, we've worked with teachers. We have five and six tenths instructional coaches. I have a bugaboo about the point six. Um, and we have, of those, we have three that are in the math department, and two and six tenths that are in the E.L.A. department. And this year, we were able to support fifty-seven teachers through coaching, and that was, that includes twenty-nine in the math department and twenty-eight in the language arts department, which is about twenty-five percent of our teachers this year, approximately. Um, that kind of breaks down with different ways based on what teachers' needs are. So, one way that we worked with teachers is our traditional model, where we worked with them full-time, and that would include at least two classroom visits with a pre- and a post-observation, and then also at least one team meeting with their whole grade level. We also worked with different teachers and just their teams for planning. And for the math department, we also worked with teachers through our follow-up sessions from last summer's math lab. So, we would have a professional development session, and in between professional development sessions, we would go into the classroom with those teachers and also do planning with them. And then we also, all of us are always available on a consult basis to meet with teachers, come in, model lessons, help plan, look at data, whatever we're called upon to do with that.
So, coaching is an essential component of an effective professional development program, and coaching is embedded support that attempts to respond to not only the two teachers' needs, but the students' needs in an ongoing and consistent way. So, our coaches set up relationships, not just with their coachees, um, but the students that they work with, 'cause they're in their rooms all the time supporting student learning. And we are proud to announce that this year, we touched two thousand three hundred and forty-two students with, um, a direct benefit from our coaching, and this is about thirty-six percent of our students, so we're super excited about that.
We actually figured out, we sat down to figure out who we were working with, that there, the only, there were no duplicates in any classrooms, that when the teachers weren't duplicated that we were working with, and the teachers or other students also weren't duplicated in their classes, so that was kind of exciting as well.
Great.
So, we're always trying to see how we know if what we're doing is working with, and having an impact. And so, um, one way that we collect data about how we are impacting teachers is anecdotally. So, we do meet with our teachers, and when we contract with them, and we set goals, and then mid-year, we reflect, and then at the end of the year, we reflect, and they always give us ongoing feedback throughout that process, so that's anecdotal. The other way is we try to collect student achievement data to see if it's making any difference. And so, a sample of the student achievement data we brought forward to you is, for the Mars exam, we still give this assessment to our first, second, seventh, and eighth grade students. And this year, the teachers' students who were coached, their proficiency on the assessment is in red, and I pulled those from the rest of the student data, and the remaining is the teachers who were not coached this year. So, um, for those assessments, it seemed to have at least a slight impact for this, this current year.
So, building on that, um, our coaching is supporting teachers in their ability to reflect, um, on the work that they're doing with students, and also to build relationships with the teachers, um, as they work collaboratively as a team. And we do a lot of work around data analysis to inform our instruction. So, some of the pieces of data, um, that we're looking at in language arts on a regular basis are writing samples. At the beginning of each unit, we do a pre-sample, um, to see what students know, and then at the end of the unit, we do a post-sample to, um, take a look at student growth. And at both opportunities, teachers take a look to see, in the first round, what do kids need, and so, how am I gonna shape my instruction to be able to address their needs? And then at the end, we do a lot of work with students, um, for them to be able to see their growth. And, um, we were in some classes at Ben Franklin, and it was really exciting, as the teacher was leading seventh graders through, um, a protocol to take a look at their work. Um, the coach and I were walking around and hearing students talk, and one little girl was like, "Oh, my gosh, I have improved so much, look at my first piece, I didn't have a lead, I didn't have a closing, look, I didn't have any dialogue in my narrative piece, and now I do." And so, that kind of data is so exciting to be able to hear, but it doesn't quite fit on a slide or a chart to be able to share with you on that. Um, but thinking about, um, assessments that we do give, um, I took a look at teams of teachers that we coach in second grade, fourth grade, and sixth grade, and in red are, um, our students whose classrooms we were coaching in for the Riverside Benchmark Two, and in black has, um, our data for our, um, district percent, um, proficient. And so, particularly in our second and fourth grade rooms, there was a tremendous amount of student growth, and I really attribute that to the opportunity that the coaching teachers received in being able to analyze their data and make instructional decisions around that data, um, moving kids forward in that area.
Another way we supported teachers' growth this year was in helping them with curriculum. And in math, we were working on math instructional units in this transition from the Common Core until we adopt something. And we worked with thirty-seven teachers representing every school in the district at least four times throughout the year within a release day, and they all volunteered, um, to do this, so they had to take time out of their classrooms, they didn't receive any stipends or compensation for any of this, so they had to write sub-plans and everything. And we're very dedicated to deepening their understanding of the math standards and how they progress within the year, as well as how they connect to, I know it's keeping you awake, with the flashing.
You keep blinking.
As well as how they connect to bef, the grades that come before them and the grades that come after them. So, the one consistent data point, again, we had for, um, first, second, seventh, and eighth grade was our Mars assessment that we administered in March. And, um, it doesn't look very significant with our first and second grade teacher teams, but for our seventh and eighth grade teams, there seems to be a significant difference with those teachers who participated in this process, understanding the curriculum in order to impart it onto, with students, implement it with students.
Great. And this year, the E.L.A. department was able to support all of our kindergarten through eighth grade E.L.A. teachers with ongoing professional development at Institute Days, and we focused on process writing. The E.L.A. coaches partnered up with a few of our coachees, and they offered a variety of sessions, some of which, um, you were able to attend, the Nuts and Bolts of Writing Workshop, Writing Boot Camp, Poetry and Spoken Word, and we worked on, um, a coordination between our social studies curriculum and our writing curriculum, so bringing history alive with social studies comment, content and informational writing. Teachers in our district were able to select the sessions that related to their grade level standards, and all of the sessions focused on meeting the needs of our diverse students, as well as creating safe and nurturing classroom environments.
Um, then, last piece we wanted to talk about as far as this past year's, um, support of professional development is, um, our benchmark assessments. And as Ms. Pace has referred to a number of times, we do spend a lot of time with our teachers that we're working with and looking at their student data to make decisions. So, um, in developing curriculum, one of the gaps that we noticed is that we didn't have a sort of an assessment that was, um, you know, the, the Mars benchmark that we give, it's a performance task, and it's usually curriculum embedded when we use it, and so, it's not taking a sampling of all the standards that students are responsible for mastering by the end of the gr, of the year. So, we, um, partnered with Front Row, which was, is a program that's computer-based, so students had the chance to take the assessment online, and it also then has, for students, um, a component where they can do practice and the math concepts that they need to work on at their own level. So, it's a diverse, uh, diversification tool as well. We, um, provided professional development in the August Institute Day on this program for our third through sixth, sorry, fifth grade teachers. Everyone attended that in that first Institute Day, the, it's only administered to third through eighth grade teachers, um, students. And then we offered it in the fall for the people who were unable to attend, so we were able to catch all of our third through eighth grade teachers, and then it was offered in January as Institute, as Day, as another session for how do you actually use the data now that you've logged on and tried it? How do we get the reports, and how do we use the data to inform our instruction? And we had about thirty teachers sign up to attend those sessions.
So, in language arts, in, um, third through eighth grade, we've had an online assessment, The Riverside, for a couple of years.
our third through sixth, sorry, fifth-grade teachers. Everyone attended that in that first Institute Day. It's only administered to third through eighth-grade teachers, students. And then we offered it in the fall for the people who were unable to attend. So, we were able to catch all of our third through eighth-grade teachers. And then it was offered in January as Institute Day as another session for how do you actually use the data now that you've logged on and tried it? How do we get the reports and how do we use the data to inform our instruction? And we had about thirty teachers sign up to attend those sessions.
So, in language arts, in third through eighth grade, we've had an online assessment, the Riverside, for a couple of years now. But we were lacking a K-to-two benchmark assessment tool. So, in coordination with our work with the Big Lift, this year, we rolled out two different assessments for teachers to use in the primary grades. The first new assessment is the Brigance, and this assessment is given to all incoming kindergarten students. It really covers a broad sampling of a child's skills and behaviors that they're exhibiting the first four to six weeks of school. Some of the areas that are assessed, fine motor, gross motor, language, and then their academics. The second new assessment that we rolled out this year is the Fontis and Pennell Reading Assessment. And our kindergarten through second-grade students, they take this assessment three times a year to be able to assess their oral reading, as well as their accuracy, their fluency, and in some of the higher levels, their reading comprehension and their skills to be able to write about reading. All of our kindergarten through second-grade teachers, as well as all of our district intervention teachers and all of our resource specialist teachers, participated in professional development sessions on these new assessments this year. So, as our next steps, as we begin to think about what next year is going to look like, the ELA department plans to have a teacher leader group next year focused on writing workshop. ELA teachers, we so far have fifteen teachers who have volunteered in grades K through eight, representing most of our schools in the district. And we're going to gather this group together seven times a year, so we can work collaboratively to think about what a seamless K-eight writing program is going to look like in our district and really think about how we're going to support all of our students under our initiative of MTSS. Secondly, we have been working, the ELA department, the math department, and the ELD department. We have a professional learning community where we get ourselves together several times a year. And this next year, we've decided to expand that professional learning community to include tech integration, special education specialists, as well as some members of our student services department. During these meetings, we are going to be working on how we support adult learners and coaching strategies and also thinking about ways that we can best align all of our efforts together.
Coming in next week, so soon, the next step. A few meetings back, you had heard from Ms. Jennifer LaRocque about the summer learning program. And so, I wanted to share the expansion of that in our hopes to align the upper grades with the primary grades with the Big Lift initiatives, so that it was accommodating families more. So, we have extended our math program this year for the summer for our rising sixth through eighth grade. I got it right, Mr. Vidalas? With the math program in the morning and then they will have an enrichment program in the afternoon with Think Together. And there are three grade levels at Thomas Edison that are not a part of the Big Lift who will be joining us in the afternoons at Fernando Rivera for the Think Together enrichment program. And that begins on Wednesday next week. And the math program goes for four weeks. And the Think Together actually goes for five weeks. And so, students will have the option to continue the enrichment program for an additional week. And lastly, we next year are going to begin piloting curriculum materials from publishers. And so, for math, we are taking that on at TK through grade eight. And for ELA, ELD, so that we're not overwhelming all of our elementary teachers trying to learn two things at the same time, we're staggering that process, but we're going to begin with the middle school teachers, since they only teach language arts and not math, so that we can begin that process with them in the middle schools as well.
That concludes our report. If there are any questions, comments?
I had one. You mentioned something about adult learning. Where does that come in and how?
So, when we're doing our professional development, we are so used to teaching children during the day and the strategies that you need for working with children. And we really need to focus in as we're coaching and when we're doing professional development for adults, that we're really thinking about what adult learners need. And so, some of the things that we've done, we've added in some choice for our adult learners. We think about the strategies that we're going to use with adult learners. And so, that was sort of what I was referring to there.
So, the adult learners are our teachers that are doing professional development?
They are our people, our staff.
Okay. That I wanted to know, because I've been working in South City and what we call adult learners, the adult school people, so I'm saying, we're not a unified district here, so... Okay, I get it now.
Great.
Thank you. I was just...
I'm glad we're thinking about our teachers and all of our people as learners, too.
Yes.
Thank you. I just had to ask that question. Thank you. Okay. Anyway, it sounds great and I thank you so much for bringing this to us. The program is wonderful.
Yeah. It sounds like things are going really well. Keep up the good work.
Yep.
It's really exciting to see such a large percentage of our teachers and students getting impacted with the coaching. And if we can keep spreading that, that can really make a difference. It's pretty clear from your numbers there that in spite of a few places where it didn't seem to have an impact, most of them, it really does.
Definitely.
So, when we talk about summer school, could I just ask a question? You're kind of commenting on sort of the advanced students, wanting to push ahead a little bit. But summer school is also for other children to catch up, isn't it?
So, it's not necessarily the advanced students. It's for all, any student in entering kindergarten through, entering second grade. It is for the middle band of students, particularly for the rising sixth through eighth graders. But we, when there's space available, we take other students as well.
Okay. This is the way I heard it, it sounded like challenging them?
I think maybe when I said enrichment for the afternoon, that probably triggered that.
All students get enrichment, not just the advanced ones.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure. Thank you. You're listening to it all and you're trying to get it all together and I want to make sure.
We know our jargon.
I know.
So, thanks for clarifying.
I'll have to kind of visit you guys more often.
Okay. Great. So... I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Borda for her years of service. It's been an absolute pleasure working with her as a program director together for the last six years. And I just want to publicly wish her the best of luck as she returns to SBA.
That's right. Yeah. Okay.
All right. We're going to take a brief moment, but I do want to thank Ms. Borda for all of her years of service and the many years of partnership and working together on many different projects. And I know that we will continue to do so, because it's just hard not to.
But she's just going to be working at SBA?
She'll be in a classroom. But she will be a very much needed ear that will be consulted.
And we expect to see you come to our future board meetings to present about something great you're doing.
Always welcome if I can, but give me a little time to settle. It's been fifteen minutes.
You'll be good.
Okay. So, let's... I wrote so many things, I've got to find my place now. Let's see. Okay. So, under Business and Financial, we've got all these start items. So, E, Keygen Corporation Presentation on District General Obligation, Measure I, Bonds and the Refunding of 2007 and 2012 Bonds for Information.
Yes, we've invited tonight our partner representative from Keygen Corporation. He's accompanied also in the audience by our bond attorney, as well as representative from the organization that conducts the underwriting for our bond sales. So, Mr. Shea is here, representing Keygen. He's going to do your presentation. And we're working on getting the presentation up. When Ms. McCullic told me this morning that she was very ill and was going to be leaving, I didn't think about figuring out a substitute for her, so we're working it out. Mr. Shea, you have...
I do have paper copies.
Okay. That would be great, yeah. If you can pass the paper copies to the board, we'll get the digital...
It was attached to our meeting packet as well.
Oh, it was attached? Okay, great.
That's fine, you know. Actually, I wouldn't really need one at all. Because, I mean, they gave it to us electronically. We were saving trees here. I admit, it's easier to read on paper, though.
Yes.
It's larger print.
Okay.
I guess I need the large screen. We can hold it up to the camera at each stage.
Oh.
He already handed it to us.
I think we have this.
He took care of it.
I thought it was something new, I was going to grab it.
Oh, those were extras.
You can give them out in the audience, since they don't have anything to look at.
Just in case Bernie can't find it.
Can't be two places at once. You can't be two places at once.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. I have a, hopefully, not too long of a presentation here to talk about issuing the last series of bonds from Measure I, as well as refinancing some of the bonds that the district previously issued to pass back some taxpayer savings, hopefully. So, with that, I will first turn to page one. And this is just starting out with an overview of what we've done so far with Measure I. As you already know, this is a measure that was passed back in 2012 in November. We've issued three series of bonds so far. One in 2013, one in 2014, and one in 2015. The total authorization was sixty-seven and a half million. At this point, we're looking at potentially issuing the last series of bonds for fifteen million dollars, and that would complete the whole measure. Just to note, oh, there we go.
So, you just have to scroll down to get to the image.
Okay.
Oops.
Okay, here we go. Just wanted to point out, so far, we have not, we have issued all of your bonds as current interest bonds, which is good. That's the lowest-cost security type that we can issue, so that's really good for your taxpayers. And we anticipate that the last series of bonds will also be one-hundred percent current interest bonds. Page two. This is basically a history of your district's assessed value. So, as you know, the tax base is what pays back, the GEO bonds. So, you can see here, you have a very resilient tax base. Since 1989, you've only had one year where your tax base declined, and that's in 2010. You can see that minus 3.82 number. But since then, through all the real estate cycles we've had, your tax base has remained very strong. Most recently, in 2017, you've grown by 5.27%, which is very good. And we did check with San Mateo County, and this number's not final yet, but they do have a real-time assessed value tracker where they look at where appeals are. Right now, you're estimated to grow by about 5.55% for the seventeen, eighteen years. So, that's a very good number. If you look at the right-hand side of the page, the bottom right, you can see some long-term assessed value growth statistics. So, you can see that long-term average is at about 5%. Any questions? Okay. And a little bit on interest rates. Here on page three, there's two graphs. Both of them are charting the bond buyer GEO bond index. And that's kind of like what the Dow Jones Industrial Average is to the stock market. So, this is a good barometer for us issuing GEO bonds as to where interest rates are. So, if you look at the graph on the left-hand side of the page, this charts that index going back fifty years. So, you can see, it's been up, it's been down, but generally speaking, in the last fifty years, we're in very low interest rate times right now, historically speaking. If you go to the right-hand side of the page, that graph, also charting the GEO, the bond buyer GEO bond index, this is looking at just the last twelve months. So, you can see, no surprise, there's been some volatility. Rates, while they are historically low, they're a little bit higher now than they were back in May, June of last year. We saw a particularly large spike in interest rates when President Trump got elected. I think a lot of people thought he was going to boost the economy and interest rates were going to go up. And we'll see what happens. There's been some volatility. There's a lot of world events that caused rates to go down. But rates are still very volatile, as you can see. Now to page four. This is now starting to look at specifically what we're doing for our last series of bonds, Series D. So, as I said before, we project that we can issue this last series using only current interest bonds, so that's great. So, this entire measure will have used zero capital appreciation bonds. If you look at the prospective issuance schedule on the left-hand side of the page, you can see the first three series of bonds that have already been issued, Series A, B, and C. And then the last series, we project will be issued in August of 2017, fifteen million dollars. The repayment ratio at 1.36 to one. And I'm not sure if everyone still remembers what the repayment ratio is, but basically, it's comparing your total payment versus the amount of debt that you're borrowing. So, basically, you're borrowing fifteen million and your total principal plus interest is just 1.36 times that. If I jog your memory back to 2014, when they passed Assembly Bill 182, they said that the maximum ratio was four to one. That would be permitted, so you're well below that. And then, once we issue this final series of bonds, we project that your overall bond repayment ratio for the entire measure would be around 1.65 to one. So, that's very low. You can see some interest rate assumptions right now, or assumptions for this particular bond series. Right now, we're looking at about a 3.06% overall interest rate. We're using assessed value growth of 2% next year, 3% in the 18, 19-year, and then 14% thereafter. So, we're being pretty conservative. If you recall, I mentioned that right now, San Mateo County is showing about 5.5% projected growth for the 18, 19-year. So, we're being intentionally conservative with the 2%, 3%, 4%. What we hope is that, of course, your assessed value comes in at 5.5% or even higher and your tax rate stays well below the $30 that voters have seen at the election. So, we believe that will happen and we just want to keep assessed value at a very conservative assumption when we issue the bonds, so that we don't have a chance of going over your tax rate. Right now, this financing is projected to be nineteen years. It's a very short financing. We don't really need to go any longer than that. And then, because this district has very strong credit ratings, we don't need to go out and buy bond insurance or credit enhancement. You have a AA1 with Moody's, you have a AA with Standard and Poor's, so you have a very strong rating. Any questions? Page five was just a little bit more on what we could have done. We could use higher assessed value growth, but we don't really think it's advisable because we want to protect your tax rate. Of course, if we issue bonds at a higher assessed value growth rate, we could pay the bonds off sooner and potentially have a lower cost of borrowing, but you do run a little bit of risk, higher risk on exceeding the tax rate. So, we want to protect against that. And then, as far as the financing term goes, I mentioned we were doing it nineteen years. We could stretch it longer, but there's really no point in doing that because we do want to keep your cost of borrowing low as well. So, just a little bit on that. Sorry. Okay. And on page six, this is the actual estimated debt service schedule for Series D using updated interest rates. So, you can see here, we're issuing fifteen million in bonds. You can see the principal amortization on the left-hand side of the page. You can see the interest and then you can see the total debt service on the right-hand side. So, again, this is all current interest bonds, 0% capital appreciation bonds, and then at the bottom, you can see that repayment ratio of 1.36 to one. So, that's the Measure I bonds. Are there any questions on that before I move into the refinancing portion of the presentation?
I have a real simple question. I should know the answer to this, but when we speak about the $30 per... But when we speak about the $30 per hundred thousand of assessed value and not wanting to exceed that, is that at any point during the life of these bonds, we don't want to exceed that? Or is it just at the point of sale? So like, if assessed value drops significantly, we might exceed that to pay off the bonds? Or is it just at the time that we're selling, given the assumptions, we think we won't exceed it?
Yeah, it's, it's actually, well, it's both. We, of course, hope that over the life of the repayment of the bonds, which is, let me see here, going all the way out to, right now, 2044, we hope that it never goes over 30. We don't have control over assessed value, of course, so that's why we want to be conservative. From a legal standpoint, though, if we thought that you were over your tax rate in any year, we would not be allowed to issue bonds. So it's actually two things. Right now, we're well below, so we can issue the rest of your bonds. And then, after we issue this last series, we, of course, hope it never goes over $30. But we wouldn't have control over that anymore.
Okay. So there's no penalty besides not being able to sell any bonds, even if we have the voter authority to do so?
Yes, that's correct. David, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think the other penalty could be, I don't know, if, let's say, 10 years down the road, you lose a lot of assessed value for some reason out of your control, and tax bills go over 30, maybe you get some phone calls from people asking why their tax bill is over $30. But that's not really a penalty, just a, maybe a community.
Nuisance. I mean, it would be part of a community information, and we would certainly consult with folks like you and Mr. Casanova on how we would approach that.
We have to do our due diligence when we speak with, like, Moody's and Standards and Poor's, that we're showing them that we have a reason for determining what we believe the assessed value will increase over the years. So if we're saying it will increase 4%, and it doesn't, an average of 4%, you look back at our history, and clearly, we have a reason to be able to believe it would be 4%. If we say it's gonna be 8%, and then they come back and they say, "Where did you get that data?" Well, there was one year that was 10%, or two years that were 10% out of the last 30, so we got, that would not be very, would not reflect well on us.
Sure. So any questions on Measure I before I move on to the refinancing? Okay. So starting on page seven.
Five, right? Are we on five?
So, as well as issuing the Measure I bonds, the district does have an opportunity to refinance two of the bonds that were previously issued. So one was issued in 2007, and one was issued in 2012. These are from bond measures from the past. If we refinance those two series of bonds right now, the estimated savings is about 1.29 million. On a present value basis, that's about 7.16%. And generally, in our industry, we start looking at a refinancing and considering one at anything over 3%. When we spoke with Julie, Julie expressed that she wanted that hurdle to be higher, which actually, we, we advocate for as well. So right now, we're, we're targeting at least a 4% present value savings. So your interest rates would have to change. They would have to increase for it to get to that. We, of course, will always try to maximize savings to as high as possible. But I think what we want to do is say, at least, if we go below 4%, then we'll have to come back to you first before we decide to move forward with the refinancing. But as you know, rates are changing every day, so this 7.16% that I'm telling you right now, it'll probably be a little bit different tomorrow. It'll keep changing until we can sell the bonds. So we have a little bit of documentation to get through before we can get to that point where we can lock the rate. You can see the third bullet point. The financing costs with these financings are contingent upon successful completion, all except for the credit ratings. So by the time we go to Moody's and Standard and Poor's, if for some reason rates change, that bill is stuck with us. So we have to be very careful on how, and how, the timing of when we ask for that rating. And we'll be careful.
And if I may add, we have to do that for the new bond issue anyway, for the 15 million.
That's correct.
So we have to, that expense comes anyway.
That's correct. Yes, and then, since we are doing this with the new money financing anyways, there is obviously some time savings, because I know this, we've come to you at separate times to just refund bonds, and that's taken up some of your time, some staff time. But right now, we have opportunity to do all of these, both of these financings at the same time. So there's some time efficiency there, as well as cost savings. Page eight, here's some actual numbers to the refinancing. So you can see the, on the left-hand side of the page, under the current payments column, you can see the debt service on, that is currently being paid by the '07 and the 2012 bonds. So that's those two bond debt service payments combined. If we were to refinance these two bonds in the current market rate environment, we would get to this estimated new payments column. So you can see it's 22.1 million versus 20.8 million. And then, you can see the annual savings in that estimated savings column. So the savings totaling about 1.29 million. You can see how that's being realized year over year.
I have a question there.
Sure.
Why is the September 2017 payment amount so low compared to the others? Or is that because of the new bond?
Because half, part of that has already been paid, because we're in the middle of the year already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Good question. If you look at the right-hand side, there's some, some more specifics to the financing. So you still have that 1.28 in debt service savings. On a present value basis, that's equal to about 1.2 million dollars. And then, on a present value percentage basis, that's about 7.16. How we get that 7.16 is dividing the present value dollar savings by the amount of bonds that are being refunded. So it's 1.19 million divided by the 16.7 million that you see at the bottom of that box there. Some other particulars here, let's see, let's see. The most interesting, I think, it would be the interest rate now versus the interest rate after refinancing. So you can see, right now, you're paying an average rate of 4.81%. And right now, if we refinance, we could get that down to 2.12%. So cutting that rate quite significantly. Any questions? The last page here is just a estimated timeline to completion for the financings. So as, as you know, it's June 14th today, and we're considering the refunding, or you, the board is considering the refunding resolution, as well as the Measure I resolution. We have a slight tweak to this timeline. We will probably be going to a ratings conference call, not next week, but the week of June 26th instead, so one week later. But the rest of the timeline will stay intact. So we still believe we can complete this financing by early August. Any questions overall for either, either part of the presentation?
That was very clear.
So there are some necessary steps to take in order to move in this direction. And they are illustrated in items F through I.
The resolutions?
Yeah, the resolutions. Just a little bit of information on the one, 1706-14. This is a debt issuance management policy. This is, as a result of SB 1029. We haven't had to have this before, so we're putting this in place. It is in our policy updates, but we haven't gotten to it yet. So Mr. Casanova and his office graciously prepared a resolution for us to adopt, so that we are able to sell our bonds. And G is wanting to sell, wanting to sell Series D. And H is refund the other, older bonds. And I is asking the County of San Mateo to establish the tax rate, so that we can pay these bonds, so. So if the board is ready, we have from F to actually H, right? Because J is different.
We have through I.
Do you want, oh, I'm choosing J is different. So I. So we have those. If you would wish to take, make a motion to approve all of these items from F to I, we can do it in one motion. It would have to be roll call.
Yeah.
So unless you have any questions on any of this.
I'm good.
I'm good.
So.
Make one motion to approve.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we approve. I'll give the resolution numbers. Resolution 1706-14, resolution 17-06-14A, 1706-14B. Scroll, 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 scroll. And resolution 1706-14C.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so can we have the roll call?
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
So we now approved F, G, H, and I. Move on.
Go forth and save us money.
Now we'll go to, that's good. Now we'll go to J. Fiscal Year 2017, 18 Budget Development Presentation. And where are you hiding? Oh, there she is. Julie?
Mr. Casanova, do you have something you'd like to clarify? Yes. F, G, H, I, yes. Okay. Yeah, it's just that the subset C gets attached. The first one just is a simple number. All right, I will go and set up the next presentation, and Ms. Kessler can get us started here.
She's open.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, for the explanation.
Very clear. Sort of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can't believe it is? Oh, I know. Yeah, I didn't remember to call my daughter. She called. Happy birthday. Okay. Thank you.
Well, Sandy is gone, so it takes a village. We've got it, and we're used to taking a village. We're very good at that. So this evening, we've got the presentation of the budget development and what you'll be asked to come and approve at the next board meeting. Okay, so the assumptions, when we build a budget for 17, 18, or any year, we have to have some basic assumptions. And, and that's what we build it on, and a lot has to do with the revenues, how they're changing for the year, and how expenditures are changing for the year. So like all years, we're, including the COLA is going to be added to the LCFF entitlement amount. So these are the COLA amounts for the year as, as we've been consulted, that they should be for 17, 18 through the 20, 21 year. And then, the LCFF funding level that we are using is the more conservative funding level from the School Services of California, as opposed to the Department of Finance. Now, mind you, again, as the gap closes, as a gap dollar amount gets smaller and smaller, the difference between the DOF and the School Services gap funding percentages, the dollar amount becomes less and less. So as you see, we've got 43% and then, pretty much hovering around the 40% amount for each of the years in the multi-year projection.
So I know it's not a whole lot of money, but the School Services do not actually expect the state to close that gap by 2021, as they?
That is correct. That is correct.
I'm astonished.
So the DOF had 100% at the end. Yeah.
So I believe they committed to do that.
So, and then, for our ADA, as you know, we have experienced some declining enrollment. But we are using this year's ADA, so the enrollment for, for this year, and the ADA for this year, and pushing it out into the following years. Now, if for some reason, 2016, 17, 18, ends up having a smaller amount than what we have right now on our P2, which is what we get funded on, and that's as of, kind of like in April, we have 6,080 students' average daily attendance. We have 6,200-something enrollment. And we've extrapolated that out. Now, if in 17, 18, we end up having only 6,000 instead of 6,800, we will have the declining enrollment protection again for one more year. So we are safe with this ADA, but the out-years would not be safe. But it's really kind of the best that we can go on is, right? Is to use this year's. Our unduplicated count is also going down, and of course, our supplemental and concentration grant funds are based on that. And we've talked about this a lot throughout the year. We had 73.35% before, and this year, it went down. And this is, it's a three-year running average. So this year, we actually have 70.11%. But because it's a three-year running average, that 73.35 gets averaged in. And so this year, we had a little bit lower. Next year, we have a little bit lower. And then, once we get to the out-years, so 18, 19, and on, provided we are at the same level we are now, we'll have a 70.11% unduplicated count. If it goes back up, it will be, again, an average of three years. And then, included in the budget is step and column. We include that each year, and in the out-years as well. As you know, both STIRS and PERS are increasing on a regular basis by quite a large percentage. And that is something that eats up a lot of our new funds. But we do include all of those increases in our multi-year projection next year and each year after, so that we can see what it will look like. Will the state fund it in the future? Maybe there will be a way. Maybe they'll use one-time funds to help us fund it, put it in reserve. So we're hoping for. There is some talk about presenting that to the board, but, to the state. But we don't know. And so, in the meantime, we just have to fund it on our own. So here's how, of course, the LCFF target is the biggest entitlement that we have. And we don't, we don't get all of it. There's a gap. And it's the majority of our money, and this was not supposed to look like this. I don't know why it, it should all be lined up.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to follow this.
I pointed it out to Sandy, and then she said, "Oh, no, we'll do it." And we did it, and then we looked at it, and it was good, and it's bad again. So it should be lined up. I apologize for that.
It's okay. The numbers are the same. That's okay.
Yeah, yeah. So this is to keep you awake, actually.
Yeah.
So what we have here is our base grant amount, $47 million. And then, our supplemental and concentration grant amounts to be added to that. So you can see, this is about $11 million more, or $10 million more, actually. It was $11 million before, but now that we don't get quite as much, it's gone down. So our entitlement amount for 17, 18 would be 57,416,000, $417,000. Our floor, our floor is basically what, oh, this is interesting. I'm sorry. I uploaded a new one to the Google Drive, but it didn't take it for some reason. And it's, these numbers are the same. But this should really say 17, 18 floor. I did correct it and uploaded it, but I don't know.
Mine says 17, 18.
The paper copy is correct.
Yeah.
And the columns are aligned, too.
I did re-upload it, but I don't, huh, interesting. Okay. So this is really, this should be 17, 18 floor. It's from 16, 17? So in other words, it's what we got in sixteen seventeen, so it makes the floor for seventeen eighteen. So the fifty-four thousand dollars. So when you take the seventeen eighteen entitlement amount and you reduce, you subtract out the minimum we're supposed to get, the fifty-four thousand, you have a three million dollar gap. That's our target gap. That's what, if they funded it a hundred percent, we would get an additional three million dollars, but they're not funding it a hundred percent. So we take that, this floor here, seventeen eighteen floor. And what we're going to do is we're going to add what they are going to fund, which is approximately forty-four percent. So forty-four percent of this three million sixty-six thousand is a million three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. We add that to the floor, and we come up with our funding, our expected funding for seventeen eighteen of the LCFF target is going to be fifty-five point seven million dollars. That's our, our bread. So I'd like to share with you some additional expenditures that we have in seventeen eighteen. And I don't know why it's doing that. I'm not doing anything here, so. It was doing it through the other. Okay. So we have a very large textbook purchase plan, a million and a half dollars. And if you recall, you set aside funds in a reserve for textbooks. And so we're going to use one million dollars from that fund, and the rest of the funds are going to come from instructional material funds that we have in the restricted general fund to pay the rest of it. We will replenish the, the, that reserve in the future when we have funds to be able to do that. But for now, we'll go ahead. We're planning on using a million dollars from that. So we, we don't have to use our general fund unrestricted fund balance for that. We also have our second round of the Chromebook purchases for the sixth. I'm not doing anything. I'm not sure.
No, no, it's.
Touch it, okay.
It's just happening.
For the sixth graders. So this is round two, and of course, round three will be the full round. But it will always continue because the sixth graders will always be new, and they'll always get new ones. But this is exciting that we are continuing it and happy to be a part of that. And then this, I won't use the pointer. You can see it here. And then also, there's support for the students that are requiring additional behavioral services, both internal and external support. And also, we are expanding our special ed program as we've been doing for years now, taking back, adding new special day classes, taking back our students that are in county programs as well as in other districts. When they're in the county programs and when they're in the other districts, they tend to be a lot more expensive than when they're in our districts. We won't be able to take back everybody from the county because they have special programs that we would have, literally have to have a one-on-one for those students in order to serve them. Additionally, we're going to have a school resource coordinator to support the community school at Woodrow Wilson. And also, a dedicated district position to collect, enter, retrieve, and analyze the data to improve student outcome. It's a large task, and Sandy would be able to speak to that if you wanted to, or Bernie. And also, we're continuing to purchase new furniture for our schools, a couple of schools at a time. And so next year, we have planned for two to three schools. That will be determined next year. All of this follows the LCAP, which you've seen. I have a question about the Chromebook thing. So we have a new batch of sixth graders each year, but when they graduate from eighth grade, do they take those with them? Or do they give them back and we? They take them. They take them. So they get to keep them. Yes, and so it gives them incentive to. They're getting obsolete so they can. It's obsolete. It's too expen, the, I guess, the guarantee for them kind of runs out. And it also gives the students a real big incentive of taking care of them. And helps them as they go into high school because they need some kind of. Yeah.
It gives them a starter device for high school, for sure.
Right. Yeah. No, and that's really important. So some other factors that are quite significant and important here is in the revenues and the seventeen eighteen budget and all the out-year budgets in the multi-year projection, there are no one-time funds included in that. Now, I will say that the, it looks like the budget will be changed to include one-time funds. Probably about somewhere around, I'm going to guess, eight and a half million dollars. No, eight hundred and fifty thousand. I wish eight and a half million. Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But if you multiply that out by ten years, it is eight and a half million. So.
Good job.
I can do some math. So eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is kind of what it's looking like it's going to be. And instead of funding it, because if you recall, it was going to be like May of two thousand nineteen that the governor said that he would give us one-time funds of one point one million dollars. But it was going to be funded in a couple of years out, so we were recommended not to include it. But it looks like the legislature is looking, and they're kind of agreeing to something that is a lesser amount but will be funded in the seventeen eighteen year. So it looks like it's probably about eight hundred and fifty thousand. So when you look at the report that I have to show you, we are probably going to have eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars more for one-time funds in there. Expenditures, important things, too. When I show you the next screen and you see the budget as well as the multi-year projection, what I want you to keep in mind is that it's based on, the multi-year projection is going to be based on the, and as well as the next year's budget. It's based on the sixteen seventeen budget, not on the actuals. Okay? And then all of the out-years are based on the assumptions that you had seen in the previous screens. Based on that, we would have to make cuts in years eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty in order to meet our three percent reserve for economic uncertainty, based on that. So, but is this that little note at the bottom there? Our sixteen seventeen year books are not closed, and our budget is conservative. And so our budget shows, indicates that we have about a three point eight million dollar deficit spending, which is not what we will have. We will probably be very close to break even, to zero, maybe a little bit of deficit spending. So when we, in the eighteen nineteen year, the cut would have to be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's a very small amount. But then you get to nineteen twenty, and you've got a four point two million dollar cut, which is a very large amount. And if the sixteen seventeen year closes with, let's say, to make it nice and even, a eight hundred thousand dollar deficit spending instead of a three, three million and eight hundred thousand, that would mean that we would be three million dollars ahead, right? And so that would mean that in eighteen nineteen, we wouldn't have to do any cut, right? And in nineteen twenty, we would have to do a cut of three, two million eight hundred seventy thousand, right? The math. We would have that much less of a cut. So it would be, instead of four point two million, we would subtract out nearly three million dollars. So it would be like a one million dollar cut we'd have to do. And that, that's really important. But also, I'm not touching anything now. Also, included in the budget is ongoing increase for medical benefits cap, which you're aware of. For, we include it in the budget for all groups that will be getting that. And not included in the budget is any kind of salary increase for the seventeen eighteen year. And we are still in negotiations, and we expect those negotiations to go into the fall. And we will, this, I find this unnerving. I'm sorry. It'll go into the fall, and then on the, hopefully, hopefully by first interim, we'll know what that would be. And we would change the budget accordingly to, for whatever is negotiated. And of course, you will know all of that information. So what does it look like? Here we go. I'm, I know it's small on your paper, and it's small here, too.
Very small.
With my glasses, I can read it here.
Where's my magnifying glass, mister?
I don't know. Can I?
Oh, much better.
I'm not sure if I can zoom in on this or not, but. I'll just leave it. Okay. So I'll just say it then. So sixteen seventeen year, as I said, we, we're showing a three point eight million dollar deficit spending, which, again, like I said, that, let's pretend three of it's not there, three million of it's not there. And then in seventeen eighteen, we have a two point six, two point seven million dollar deficit spending. And eighteen nineteen, three point five million. And in nineteen twenty, it says a hundred and thirty thousand dollar deficit spending. And the reason for that is because the multi-year projection already includes those cuts. So it includes cuts of the one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for eighteen nineteen and the four point two million in nineteen twenty. And then in twenty twenty-one, it doesn't require any cuts, provided we don't make any changes, right? And again, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of one-time funds added to that. We pretty much, if nothing else changed, if we gave no salary increases, I don't want anybody to shoot me, so that's good. We would be pretty much at a break-even point all the way out and spending down our reserves, not at all. If we use the DOF's numbers, instead of a four point two million dollar cut for the nineteen twenty year, it would be a two point six million dollar cut. And so clearly, if the DOF's funding level is, is the one that happens in the School Services, and if we have three million dollars more this year, and we have less of the deficit spending, then we would be clear all the way through. So, you know, normally, this looks bigger. Normally, you can read that.
It's, yeah, you say can, but this is extremely small.
We, you know, in the future, maybe I'll give you a full page for that one.
Yeah.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, if we did a half a sheet or something.
It's normally like that, but this is usually more readable.
It's probably started like this.
Smaller. It's because Sandy's not here.
I have, I have actually a quick question. So you're saying there might be potentially eight hundred and fifty thousand of one-time funds?
I'm sorry, say that again.
You said there might be eight hundred and fifty thousand of one-time funds coming this year, right?
Yes.
So does that, that's not, that's before the, this, this table?
It's not included in here.
So it's going to affect all the other years throughout, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but it is a one-time funds.
Yeah.
But then hopefully, we get one-time funds on a continuous basis, which is what we've.
You did that, and it moved.
I'm not touching anything.
It's possessed. It was like that earlier, too.
So this is what our fund balance looks like, and now, again, that's including the cuts.
We can see this.
But again, it should, if we don't change anything, it would look like that without any cuts. Because of our, we're not going to deficit spend the way the budget shows this year, and we're going to get eight hundred and fifty thousand more. So it would look like that without cuts, provided we did nothing else.
So it looks actually better.
I'm sorry?
Looks better.
Yeah.
Really good, so.
It would look much better. But what you have to also remember is that it's still deficit spending. It's just that we would have three million dollars more in our fund balance to hold off on any kind of cuts. But then that's assuming doom and gloom, which may or may not happen in the following years. And it's always cyclical. I mean, the economy has always been cyclical and will always be. So there will be difficult times following good times, and then hopefully, good times again, unless everybody moves to Canada. But, sorry. Anyway, so this part here is just the next steps, as you're aware, by the end of this month, the, we need to have an adopted budget, and that should happen at the next board meeting. And we've had the, the public hearing. The LCAP has to be approved before the budget can be approved. And then the County Office of Ed will most certainly approve our budget. The way it stands, I'm sure they would approve it. They could disapprove it, but that is highly unlikely. And then we will have, let's see here. We would have time to correct the, whatever actions we needed to do. And then the state will adopt its budget very soon and within a few days. And we will adopt, we will make the changes accordingly, any kind of significant changes, which would be probably just to the one-time funds, is my guess. And within the forty-five day period, and then the first interim would show those changes.
And so just to clarify, so even though the legislature is expected to pass a budget in just a couple of days here, the governor has, I believe, up to thirty days to sign or veto any of the provisions that the legislature passes. So we will not adjust our budget until all of that process is complete, and we have something certain. Apparently, he's agreed to the money in this year, but his original intent was to give us the money in two years from now. So how he feels on the day he has the pen, we don't know. But I think they've pretty much cleaned, you know, made the approval already, and maybe it'll, it'll happen. But anyway, so we won't see anything different in the adopted budget at the end of the month.
Okay. Questions? Any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions? Well, thank you. I think we did, this is only for us to review, so we'll do it next meeting. Uh huh. All right. Now here, now this, this, this. I'm on the wrong page. Here? No. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll also start. So I think we're all the way down to the end of our agenda here. So thirteen board policies, yay! Administrative regulations. So Bernie, it's yours.
Yeah, so there's several board policies that need to be updated. These are mostly, as always, results of legislation. The one I would like to just draw attention to is the requirement that boards adopt a suicide prevention policy. And that has to happen before the first day of school. The San Mateo County Office of Education has worked extensively with community members, both providers of services as well as educators and parents. And they developed that suicide prevention manual. And so that, they're encouraging every school district to also adopt that in sort of one way, one consistent way for all districts to respond and get support because different agencies will be trained on that as well. So that's just one of the things. I just wanted to draw attention to that. The other ones, I think, were pretty, just updates, no, no, no big changes.
But so by adopting that, will there be any, some kind of training for our teachers to identify it?
Yes, so part of the policy is that every, not every, many school employees will need to be trained on this. And the first line of, I want to say defense, but it's not really defense. Like whoever interacts with the student who's in crisis first, so certainly principals, vice principals, deans, counselors, lead teachers, you know, nurses, all of these folks are, will be receiving the training to be there. And then, to a lesser extent, teachers will be given information on how to spot signs of this. Because not, it's not always that the student will say, this is what I'm considering, but they do. And that's when, you know, you get into high gear. But there are other signs as well that may be red flags that, you know, mentioned to a principal or to a counselor could help prevent something.
I know sometimes it's, I'm not so sure necessarily in elementary, early elementary. But I know with high school and possibly could be middle school, sometimes children hear it from other children, the keys to that.
That's actually discussed in the policy as well.
So I, I'm just making, want to make sure that we have all, everybody really aware of what to look for because it's, it's a sad situation when it's not reported.
Yes, I think the most important part of that policy, if I remember correctly, the procedure, is this protocol that's developed. Um, when the situation occurs, here's the steps that we will follow to ensure the safety of the student and, um... Because that's been the most inconsistent, um, certainly among schools when we've had those situations. Certainly, and much more certainly among districts. Um, so I think that would, that's going to help streamline and, and create the most positive outcome.
Thank you. Now, reading is one thing, but I just want to make sure we're prepared, everybody's prepared to, to identify it. So...
I'm not sure I have a correction, but I was given food for thought in the section, um, Board Policy sixty-one forty-four A about controversial issues. I guess because it's so vague what it's saying about what might be a controversial issue. And I'm thinking about, you know, out there in social media, things that are quote controversial. And people want to say, and it says in here about having a balanced manner and addressing all sides of the issue. And yet you'll see people claiming that things, I mean, you'll see somebody who's claiming that evolution is a controversial issue and you should present all sides. Not every issue actually does have two valid sides. So I was kind of, I mean, I'm not sure there's anything to change on that, but it kind of bothered me the way this is worded because you could look at that and make, a person could actually read that, I think, and make an argument that, well, we need to treat, teach creationism as well as evolution in our classes. Or, you know, we need to teach that climate change is a hoax versus that climate change is science, you know? So I was a little bit bothered by that section.
Yeah. And I think it is, it is an attempt, um, to have staff sort of refrain from editorializing and giving a personal position on something that, um, is presented differently in the, in this district or adopted curriculum, let's say about climate, uh, change. And so if that's in our textbooks, um, and a staff member may have a different position, they're to refrain from inflicting that opinion on their students and, and pushing that over what's in the curriculum. And it happens in lots of different areas, um, around family planning and lots of different areas where a staff member may hold a different position than what's in the curriculum. And this is a, an attempt to, to say, we need to have a balanced approach and you don't insert your, the emotion that you have on a particular issue. So much more to go over, to exceed what's in the, in the materials.
Yeah. Um, that seems fairly, I mean, that seems clear in like section three, it talks about that. But right above it, where it just says, "Instructions shall be presented in a balanced manner, addressing all sides of the issue without bias or prejudice and without promoting any particular point of view." That's the one that kind of worries me almost because you could use that as, like I say, an argument that we have to present.
So I assume we can say...
It's a double thing. It says it one thing and then the end it says, you can't.
So I think we can change the word "all." I think that is, that, that word always makes me, always makes me uncomfortable because we can never ensure all. We can say many sides.
Or, yeah, or addressing, addressing the issue, you know, completely or something. If we can find some way to say that, that doesn't necessarily say that every, every opinion that anybody holds on some of these issues is valid because, you know, frankly, it's like, well, some things aren't up for discussion anymore.
And I think that there, there are as many sides of an issue as there are human beings on the earth. So I think to say that we're going to present all sides, I think, is, is an overpromise. And we will certainly under-deliver. Um, so I think I will look at that and see if I can come up with something that says what we mean by that.
Yeah. Because I know what it's, what it's meaning and wanting to say, but, you know, I don't like leaving us too vulnerable. Yeah. Okay. That was, that was my only...
Thank you.
I just think that that's something that's very strong because it happened to my son in Kenan, in first grade when they discussed the Vietnam War. And the teacher had a different opinion, uh, her own opinion, and he came home crying.
Right.
Uh, because of what was said. So I, I think it's important that something is there. But it's really, like, I agree with you. It's kind of hard to group it all in one little sentence.
Right. Well, that's what I said, the, the clause about teachers keeping their opinions more or less to themselves is, is one thing. And, and saying, well, do, you know, all sides is another thing.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of a back and forth here. Anyway, if you come up with something better, you can let us know because we can always readdress it, I guess.
Yeah.
We have a second reading?
Yeah, there'll be some changes on the second reading on that, on that clause.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. So we have a motion to approve it as a first reading and, and have them work on that?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve, um, these board policy as a first reading with a request that we find a better wording for this section.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Glad you brought that up. Okay. So let me turn back to this big binder here. Okay. So we're done with that. Now, uh, board member comments, reports, and reflection on board meeting guidelines. Do we have any? Starting with who?
Um, I'll go first. Um, I selected, "We will come to the meetings prepared, mindful, attentive, and ready to contribute." I thought we had the conversation. I thought that worked pretty well for tonight.
Well, I was, you know, looking over, over them all because I think that was what we decided last time. And, um, just, I think we actually did a pretty good job with sticking to all of these. Thanks to things being fairly lively, we brought my slightly tired and scatterbrained self back from summer vacation. And so we're doing well.
Well, I too, I've always commented that I think almost every time we, we have followed these very carefully. Only one I looked at this time and just because we never brought it up, I thought I'd bring it up anyway, that we will maintain confidentiality. And I think we've always done that. So constantly. But that, that's one that I don't think we ever look at because I guess we think we're okay.
It's sort of not what you do during the meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Because if we're going to do that, we'd be outside the meeting.
Right.
But anyway, I just thought I would bring that up. But as I said before, I think we're, we're doing a great job of following all of these, so. So with that, let's move on then to persons wishing to address the board on closed session items. Anybody?
Would everybody charge the sodium?
Okay. Then we'll move on to sixteen. We are now going to convene to close session. And the time is eight thirty-five, it looks like from this angle. And, uh, we're going to, we're going to kind of let you guys leave.
Mr. Ku has something to say.
Oh dang it, I forgot. Okay. So before we go to close session, we'll do that in a minute, we would like to close in memory, this meeting in memory of Mike Lefiti.
Lefiti.
Lefiti. And he is a, is it a relative?
Yes, a relative cousin.
Okay. Of our, one of our board members, Manufo. And so we, we'll take a few minutes to do that, so. Okay. So do, did we want to say what happened or...? Okay. All right. Okay. Thanks, guys. We're going to go to closed session in a few, couple of minutes. Thanks for coming. Thanks for the great explanation. Very heavy. Very heavy.